Okay. Welcome everybody to the Historic Preservation Architectural Review Board Meeting of Thursday, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, let's start by saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So, uh, has everybody removed, reviewed the minutes and does anyone have a comment on them, a correction or anything like that?
No.
Okay. So I will take a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of February eighth.
I shall move.
All in favor? I, I second, I second it. Thank you. The first thing on our agenda is Green Harbor LLC, twelve Green Street.
They have asked to withdraw the application.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Do we have to vote or something?
No.
No.
Yes, you have to make a.
To, to vote to withdraw the application? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion was for Green Street to, um, approve their.
Grab that pen with you, this one doesn't work, thanks.
We're gonna move on to the consent agenda items. Sixteen Redwood Road LLC has applied for a certificate of appropriateness for proposed new dormer and roofline. Eric Schwartz, trustee of Sag Harbor BLB LLC. One eighty-four Redwood Road has applied for a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed removal of a chimney stack. Christopher McDonald and Daphne, I can't pronounce it, Daphne, I apologize to you, three nineteen Madison Street, have applied for the appropriateness, a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed windows and sliding glass door. Peter and Erin Fellini, twenty-eight Princeton Road have applied for a certificate of appropriateness for a proposed fence. Thirty-nine Archibald LLC, thirty-nine Archibald Way, have, have applied for an application for the certificate of appropriateness for the removal of a driveway grate, gate, landscaping, barbecue and patio. Whoa. Polly Posamuno, eighty-one Suffolk Street has applied for a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed new window on accessory structure. Jim Gorgio, BB Electric Contractors, one twenty-seven Main Street, has applied for a certificate of appropriateness for a proposed new sign called Southern Tide. Harbor Holdings LLC, eighty-one Harbor Avenue, has applied for a certificate of appropriateness for a proposed swimming pool. And David and Ann Cribbs, twenty-five Henry Street, have applied for a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed swimming pool, pool terrace fences and retaining wall. I think that they did. So I'll take a motions to approve the consent agenda items. I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
So we're gonna deviate from the agenda for a bit. We have Public Haring Midnight Plaza LLC, but we're gonna move that down one space in the agenda. I'd take the motion to open new business. I have a motion.
I don't think we need to have a motion.
Do we need to have a motion to open?
No.
Alright, so we'll open new business. John and Renee, Farde Karo, for North, uh,
Notre Dame.
Notre Dame Street. Hmm, okay, thank you. So please identify yourself.
Good evening, Lisa Sawyer, on behalf of the applicant, I'll confirm permits. I believe you have the plans in the file. The proposed project is a hundred and ninety-nine square foot addition on the seaward side of the property and then to do six small, well, filling additions on the corners of the seaward room. They're about a foot each. There is little notches in the existing house. And then the owners are also looking to do an expansion of the front porch right now, the other front street. And they are looking to just expand it to the width of the front of the house. And that would be thirty-four square feet, so a total of eight square feet of a current front porch expansion. And then there are two.
This is not new after all.
That are at an angle in the rear deck. And they are looking to fill those in, and those are fifty-one square feet. Like over a hundred and one square feet, that's the age of these seagull side of the house. Um, part of these into the house, they are also looking to reshingle the house as far as saw it. And fill from basically a yellow colored siding, do more of a white clavering siding, some woodwork details, some black windows, as well as just a few wood details, natural wood on the residence.
This is not, this is not a historic home, no.
The additions, other than the little fill-in additions on the corners of the house, uh, the main addition will not be visible from the street. It's on the house as well as the rear deck.
If you have anything here that shows what's new and what's old.
Uh, I believe there was a survey that was submitted working out in spring. Like listed another.
It's noted, is it just only gray areas?
All right.
It's, it's, I think, well, on the first two pages of.
Oh, oh, okay.
Was trying to square off those funny little. And I do have the architect available if he is willing to have a kind of questions.
I'll call the phones.
The project go for the harvest community as well.
I'm, I'm happy to see all the native plants in the landscape plan. Love that. Um, I can't say that I love the design of this like white barn with black trim. But I feel like that is the direction that Red, uh, Redwood has been going, so my own personal taste doesn't enjoy it.
Well, it's another white house with black trim to add to the millions and millions of white houses of black trim that are sprouting up like mushrooms. But, um, that is easily changed in the future, so fine. When the, when the white, when the white and black goes out, it'll go out.
Easily a white color.
Michelle, do you have any thoughts?
I just wanted to take a quick peek at the landscape. I think I looked at this before and it did have the landscape, um, the choices. Um, so I think that's a positive. Other than that, I didn't. I didn't have anything that, um.
Also, I think you were very thorough in the way you presented, um, this application, so I appreciate that. Yes.
Judith, do you have any thoughts?
No, I gave one. I, I, um, I think these changes are really not huge and uh, I, I think they're fine.
Yeah, I have no comments either. I think it's okay. Um, so, so I'll entertain a motion. Uh, any other comments? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the alterations as proposed.
I will make that most.
Do I have a second? Okay. Megan, I think that can pass.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And now we're gonna go back. Is fifty-nine Glover Street here?
Oh, alright, yeah.
That's the scope. It's, uh, just caregiving what. Thank you.
We're alike.
Are gonna be right there.
Okay.
Thanks for purchasing.
This.
Yeah.
For change, yeah.
Usually if there's a public hearing. There's a public hearing now tonight on midnight construction. So they'll open the top of the year.
Thank you. So this is, um, Midnight Pizza, fifty-nine Glover Street, correct? Okay, please identify yourself.
Good evening, Mark, who you're right from Creighton, D.C., representing the owner of fifty-nine Glover Street. I'm also joined here tonight, architect Marcus Semkey. So that's.
I missed that.
I was asking Carrie if you can share, there you go. I was to be able to share your screen now.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So this application is for demolition and new construction of a two-story residence at fifty-nine Glover Street. The Marcus presented this application, uh, last summer. Um, it had positive reviews from the board.
Here?
Yes. Um, it was June of twenty twenty-two. I guess.
June of twenty-two?
Yes.
Yeah.
Not last summer, this summer before. June of twenty-two.
Yeah, since, since then, they've obtained Harbor Committee approval, DEC approval, and we had to get a variance even though there's a pool on the residence. Now it's being rotated and moved closer towards the water. So we had to get a backyard variance granted at the, at the hearing. Um, so the proposal is to demolish that structure that was built in nineteen ninety-seven. It is not historic, it's not contributing into constructed new two-story residence. Also in the application, we are going to be building up the buffer zone. So right now there's a very sad, can't really even call it a buffer zone, but there's invasive species by the shoreline. We're removing the invasive species, putting in a buffer zone native, uh, species. The premises is very green from the premises. We have pictures of the existing property. But from Glover Street, it's, it's tucked back. There's a, there's a driveway, so currently you can see part of the garage, but you can't see too much of the house. And there is a rendering that the architect will take you through to show what.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. But we have this as a contributing landmark in the historic district. And so could you or the architect clarify what building we're talking about?
Sure, so Marcus, the structure was built in nineteen ninety-seven.
Yep.
We have a.
Did you say contributing resource or landmark? Is the difference?
You're absolutely correct. Well, landmark, little L.
Yeah.
This is a contributing.
Contributing resource, right?
This is a contributing resource. But the description, uh, makes reference to there being a couple of other buildings on the property.
Okay.
So perhaps that's, we don't have an image of what we're talking about.
Sure, Marcus, can you?
So that would be helpful because before we get very much further into this application, that would look like a fairly substantial house. Uh, I don't know, we, we seem to have a, a confusion, at least perhaps just in my mind, because that section block and lot, nine oh three dash three dash one dash nine point three, street address being fifty-nine Glover Street, is a contributing resource in the historic district built approximately eighteen sixty-five to seventy-five.
That can't be the right.
Well, I'm just saying, that's, that's what's the, you know, that's what's on the agenda, so I'm, I'm a little confused.
Okay, yeah.
Sure, there is another structure on the premises with a shed closer towards the water, so Marcus, if you can show us a picture of that, but the the house that there now is sculpted in nineteen ninety.
I'm, actually, I, I unfortunately don't have a picture of the existing shed, um.
I don't think the board would be as concerned about the shed as about the primary building, so to commit to occupy the property and thought that the one tap story, two-day, same residence with one of the ones, dark windows, chimney pipe, and a cross-sitting roof, it was turned corner.
That's not a one man story.
So we, we just have a confusion over, you know, what, what property we're, what house, I should say. It would be good to have a phone. But I can solve this of the rear portion of it. There's the box, hold that.
Alright.
That's what I had, sorry.
Okay, so that is. Maybe we have some paperwork? Because that's what's listed in the.
I mean, that's the rendering.
Alright, I got it.
Like subdivision and the address change?
I don't know. I think that's something we need to clarify that for. You know, entertaining when you're designing for demolishing a house. What's described in the nomination form is not what we're. So there's, there's a discrepancy in the documentation here. Um, the house, a fifty-nine Glover Street, is at that. You could have an image of the Suffolk County tax map to verify the location of that lot. Because the house that I'm familiar with at that lot.
You have nine oh three, three dash one dash nine point three?
Yes, uh, that's a house that is near the intersection of where Wa, of where Long Island, Railroad Avenue cuts off of Glover. And that's a contributing property, so it's difficult to have a law.
That's the neighboring.
Is that the neighboring?
That's the neighboring.
Okay, so maybe our paperwork is mislabeled.
Yeah, it's nine oh three, dash three, dash one, dash nine point three.
Jason.
So nine point one and six point two are the adjoining properties.
Okay, I can't tell enough from the surroundings. I don't know. And I'm looking at our nomination forms, which is labeled as three dash one, nine point three, fifty-nine Glover Street. And that was the description of our data. So that's why I was somewhat surprised to see this on the agenda. And also to learn the people, the board has already heard this and it's given you the, you know, an indication that you could move forward with that, so we seem to have different properties.
I mean, I reviewed the, I reviewed the hearing, the recorded hearing this morning.
Uh-huh, okay.
It was absolutely put forward in front of the board. Um, there, there were, we get a permit, you know, forward with Harbor.
But we just have to make sure we're talking about that.
Yeah, let me, let me just, let me just interject here.
Obviously.
Huh?
You have to, if you're proposing to demolish a contributing resource in a historic district, there's a different standard to apply from this board than what they gave you before, so if we're considering code section.
Yep, so.
This house.
Yeah, this is what I want to suggest. I think that, that Zach should go by and visit the property. Maybe some of us also should visit it. But the main thing would be to go back through the records in the DOB and see what was filed in terms of the the demolition, construction, because you had to demolish something else, probably.
Yeah.
Um, so if we could go and look in those records.
Okay.
Uh, so I see Carrie's trying to run to get those. Um, so maybe we can post, we can table this for a few minutes, see what she gets. Bring somebody else up, and then if not, maybe take a month and take a good look at it. I, I really still think that a visit would be advisable.
Yeah.
Because we, we would need to really document this and, and, and make sure that we're not violating any precedents here. Okay, so to the extent that we can, we can do this today, fine, but if not, we'll, we'll decide, but it might be a month from now. Thank you, thank you for your understanding. So I'm gonna take a motion to table this.
This is a public hearing?
Yeah, we could, yeah.
Yes.
You wanna hear from the public before you, because people probably came here based on this. So you want to at least hear from the public before you, you take.
Okay, I'd like to hear what they had to say within the context of, of, of the facts, but we'll open it up for public. Are there public comments? Yes, thank you. Please come forward and identify yourself.
Uh, John McAlonan, I'm in D.C., all my name. I'm a year on residence, it would be two twelve. And I think the point of the permit, um, expires, or fifty-nine expires in two days. And it had been granted for a year before this. And what I'm leading up to is, is a really a question, so I got to the, um, it's a lovely street, top drawer. I mean, the, everything put in is beautiful. But somebody disparagingly mentioned a little shed. And a lot of the charm is in those little features and then, so, um, but what we have here is like sausage. Getting made is another story. We have construction machinery, equipment, workers each with their own automobile, uh, materials coming in and even they respect the hours and I really can't complain about any individual contractor. But it's not a residential street anymore. It is a year-round construction site. And my question is really, is there some way to get a moratorium? I don't mean made by neighborhood or it's just, uh, uh, one more point as to the danger is like the intersection of Main Street and Glover has that odd forty-five degree angle. And we avoid an adult car. We just don't go by that intersection because it's, and there are two houses on each side with contractors parked. So that's just my premise. It's all great work. It's a lovely street, lovely street. But I'm talking Green Street and Glover are constantly in an uproar. And, uh, so I, I don't know the legal jargon here locally, but I'm thinking if there's a neighborhood division, maybe you put permits from this neighborhood in the bio, bottom of the stack for a while. Or.
That's everywhere in Sag Harbor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, that was it. I, I'm, I'm really not complaining about anybody's work, the architects, the tree surgeons, everyone is, is talking about.
Let me ask you, do you have any comments in, in in relation to what's on our agenda right now?
Well, that's just it, yeah.
But it's a.
They've had, they've had one year already, and I think they've taken their fair share of neighborhood goodwill. If you divide neighborhood goodwill all up and down Glover, some people are taking a lot of it, more than their fair share. We're right across and everybody shows up at eight o'clock. Again, they respect it, you know, at nighttime it's quiet.
Are you saying there's ongoing construction there now?
Not now, no.
Okay.
Oh, well, yes, I mean, to the right, to the left.
To the right, to the left, but not this specific, okay.
But, uh, so that's why I wanted to make it a more general thing. I understand what you're getting at.
Right.
But you can take each project individually and they're wonderful. But when you put them all in a pop together, it's a residential street at the end of the day. And if there's some sort of accommodation, I'm not the Glover lawyer, this is Val, but somebody probably could come up with an idea that's, uh, not discriminatory in the sense of Ralph a little bit, but for the sake of the goodwill, uh, and that's, that's it.
I don't know. Do you want to formalize a con, comments with a, with a letter to the Department of?
Oh, I'd be happy to, sure.
Please.
That's a, that's a nice.
That's a good idea.
What is your name?
John J O H N McAlonan, M C A L O N A N. Thank you, that's, that's you.
Okay. Uh, is there any other comment here in the live gallery here? Please.
Please, thank you. Uh, my name is Ron Rubenstein, I'm in fifty-two Glover, which is sort of across the street from fifty-nine. And my only question was, I don't know, my, my question is, will the views of the, of the upper coat that we get from the second story of our house, is, I haven't seen the, the, the new drawings yet, is the house going to be wider? Do you obstruct those views or, or not? And is that relevant to your discussion?
You can look at that.
Yeah, you can, you can look at these plans, but, but the, my comment is.
Thank you.
We are, we are relegated to the facade and the exterior in terms of the width of the house and that, that would be, that would be ZBA.
That would be, okay.
Okay, and, and they're, they're relegated to what's legally permissible.
Fine, okay, thank you, sure.
Okay. Uh, is there anybody remotely who would like to make a comment on?
No.
Okay. So, um, now can I table the discussion until we make a determination, Liz?
Yes.
Okay.
And for the record, our next meeting is April.
April eleven.
Okay, I failed to write down the name of the representative for, for the project. But I think what we're saying is we're gonna postpone this until we can do the research until April eleven.
April eleven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Somebody make a motion?
Motion to.
Table.
Table. And close the public hearing?
Yes.
We're not gonna close the public hearing because you're not.
Oh, right.
Keep it open.
Right, okay, sorry.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, who's here for, to represent twenty-eight Jefferson Street?
Everybody saw, um, that's for boards?
Yes.
Well, I think Zach, for the benefit of the public, I'd like to either read it or some of it for everybody's benefit.
Well, I didn't bring your spit.
Hi, how much?
Okay, I'll, I'll have a great time.
Yes, sorry, thanks.
Thanks. Okay, um, so this twenty-eight Jefferson Street is a contributing resource in the historic district. That'd be built in eighteen twenty, eighteen twenty-eight or so. And, um, the project basically respects and retains the overall massing of the house, uh, which has been enlarged at the back. And when it was enlarged, in two stories, it received a wraparound, uh, porch. Uh, some Victorian hero features which are quite interesting, uh, one being, uh, the door, we did all back porch. So those features are represented for large, I believe, around the same. We looked at the window sashes, that's always something we're a little concerned about. And, uh, it seemed to me that the sashes not only went from what would have been the original six over six to a six over one, but many of those six, like upper sashes, are also new as well. So there was, there was an attempt by a former owner to maintain the bulk of the house, but to enlarge those lower window panes to a single tank. But, uh, the proposal would put back the full six over six and retain, they're interesting, these are federal type, the demi-lune window half round up in the attic peak and the two quarter rounds, those are all original to the house and those, those of course will be preserved. Uh, what's quite wonderful is the front portico, uh, that had been rebuilt, the door itself and sidelines, uh, that of course is all treaty changed. So I'm finding that overall the houses, their interior adjustments, of course, but that's not for your review, it's intricate. So that's the summary of the report.
So, so to put this in layman's terms, uh, we don't see anything that's being proposed here that's significantly altered or diminished the historic capital.
No, the, the one, the, the most major change, I would say, uh, the exterior is along the side, I guess the, the east side of the house. And that had been enlarged at least twice. And, and in, in a kind of a additive way that doesn't have a, you know, a sort of a single kind of a design vision going on. And the architects are attempting to what you might call regularize that. And they're also extending the, the height of the back uh, on that side of the house. I think, John, you should walk through that part. But the, the back ridge of that back extension is not being raised, and so that is situated lower relative to the ridge of the front historical department. And so that is situated lower relative to the ridge of the front historical department house. So that's to be, to be retained.
So.
On the other dogs, like those exterior alterations.
He's got A four up. Was that, was that my eyes a bit or?
Right.
Is that A four? Is that A four?
A four.
Sean Leonard, the architect of the.
Please go ahead, Mr. Leonard.
Yeah.
But at least, well, you know, for the record, at least that you can introduce.
Thank you. So I have just one question. Do you have this on PDF so that the, the, the public here can see it and, and the people who are watching on Zoom? Do, do we have any PDFs of this?
I have given the village the electronic, but I don't have any condition.
Do, do we have it? Do we have it available?
Yeah, they're.
Yeah, I'm trying, but the computer, this laptop isn't letting you share.
Okay.
It's not being.
I just, I just want everybody who's attending to get as much of an understanding of what's going on.
And they have it where you're doing that.
So if you, if you, we, since we all have A four open.
Yeah.
Maybe you could show that to the public, at, at least to the attendees as you talk, as you speak.
So I'll walk through a little bit of it.
Please.
Something exactly based on, as you've mentioned, we've been working with the village for the past year on both with the ZBA as well as some comments that this board has made to us. Both about a year ago, as well as some comments that you made just about a month ago when we, when we last met. And so as, as was pointed out, the front portico, we're looking to restore that front portico back to the way it was from, we have some photographs and some drawings of what it was at one time. We don't know if it's original or not, but at least it, it was probably done at some time when the building had brought along some Victorian elements to the, to it.
Right.
The front door and the front, the sidelines and transom that are there, we're looking to restore that as well. Bring that back to, to its original look. There are some parts we looked at as far as it's all like leaded glass, leaded pieces. So we're, we're looking to fix all of those elements on, on the front door. We'll come along to Suffolk side. The comment that was made, we were going to remove the door on the back portion of the building that was going to face Suffolk Street. And it thought it was kind of strange to have a set of steps coming up to nothing. We looked at it a little bit further. And so instead of removing the steps and having the railing over, we're going to maintain the, the current steps and and the railing the way you see it today and then keep that door going in off of Suffolk Street. The railing is a, the current railing on that back porch is a lattice crisscross. It's not original. We're not going to keep that. We want to go to something a little bit more historic, which will be a proper rail, bottom rail and, and lattice.
Yeah.
The, the porch post on the back too, when we looked at it, appear to be original as well. These, the, the posts that are along the, I could just point out, this just right here.
Yeah.
Those seem to be original and we're going to restore those as well, along with the brackets.
Right.
You mean like you're gonna clean up the already existing materials? You're not replacing them?
They're not, yeah, they're not in bad shape. They're actually, they're.
They look good.
We looked at them and we, you know, they're, they're solid, so there's no rot or anything like that. You come across them on, on the local homes. So we, we feel that they're well, they're worthy of just keeping it.
I think I have the same columns on my dad's house.
The column merchant went around town selling the hours.
We had originally on this, on the, what is the south side there? As well as the Suffolk side, we had originally proposed the idea of having a more of a big picture window that was gonna be on the back corner. And it was some comments that you thought it'd be more appropriate if there was kind of double hung. So that's what we've done. We changed that to become a pair of double hung as opposed to a, a picture window.
Good.
Along there. And then the, the portion that, which is really the, the east side here, the more important area. We are, right now, just like a, a dormer piece here that sticks out and makes this whole back area very chopped up. So we're looking to just extend that across towards the back. But fall short of the back of the house, so we can still maintain the gable of that you see today. So we're not looking to, to change, you know, that shape on the back. But it's still clean up the east side here so that it's a little bit more consistent along there. Uh, there is a, a stained glass window up top on that dormer piece that, with some colored glass in it, that we also, I'm not sure when it was brought into the building, but we are going to restore that. But instead of keeping it up there, we were just lowering it down on, on the wall.
On, on the addition, on the addition part, not on the.
On the addition part.
Yes.
Correct.
Which was, is probably newer than the, I mean, that's a Victorian touch.
So.
Yeah.
We also had a pair of doors that were going to be on the east side that was going to walk out of the living room. We've no longer going to do that. We're going to keep the windows that are on the east side. So there'll be the pair of double hungs as, as they are today. And the, the other part too, that we, we had a discussion about is the siding on the house. We're going to replace the siding with new wood siding. The siding is on there. It's not original. Uh, it doesn't have the proper spacing to the weather. So we're going, we wanna make sure that we bring it back so that we have the proper spacing. And we're going to nail, uh, put the nails on the face of the shingles, on the butt face, one inch up, one inch over, the way it would have been done at the time.
Someone's gonna call me to make sure those nails go in the right spot. It'll really return. I mean, the, the, the shingle that's on there now is replacement and it's too short. So, and it's conventional, you know. But, uh, but in replacing it, they're gonna go to a longer exposure or weather. I think we're talking about with six inches or so. Right now it's around five. And you can go that extra mile by surface nailing these shingles because that is additionally out of the good good fact. That would be fantastic.
But the nails don't show.
The nails show.
Oh, they show.
The nail heads show.
Oh, very interesting.
That's historic.
Yeah.
Nowadays, we conceal the nailing in successive layers.
Yeah.
That's the way you put a roof on. But that's not the way a wall, maybe so. Your contractor is willing to do that.
Really interesting. Wow.
Yes.
What type of shingles are you gonna use? I mean, what type of wood?
Uh, it'll be cedar.
Cedar?
Yes. Are there elements on this, on Jefferson side? There's, we were always proposing to put a door here. And we were going to move the door from Suffolk to, to that side. What we like to do is we're going to have this door recreated for here. So that we'd match Suffolk side there. But right now this has some colored glass in it. We're not going to do the colored glass. We'll just have clear glass in the door.
Pool already approved?
The pool has, we, we went to the ZBA for that. So, so that's part of.
That's part of the application?
Yes.
And this, these lanterns, this twenty-two inch, almost twenty-three inch lantern, it seems large. Can you make that a little smaller?
Where are the lanterns located?
Um, this is one of these, which is only seventeen, is, which I still think is on the large side.
Are they on the front door or what?
Yeah, this is the front floor. And that's where this large twenty-two and three-eighth height.
That's this?
That's that.
Right.
But I think it looks larger in real life.
Hmm. Oh, and here it is from inside.
Yeah, but I think it's gonna be bigger than that.
The twenty-two includes, it's the total from the top.
From the top.
With, with.
Including the hang.
Right. So the light itself is a, is a much more appropriate to scale light.
Okay.
Do we have the dimensions of the after wall lamp?
Is it from there to there?
Hard to tell.
Yeah. This looks like smaller than, or maybe the same as this.
You mean? Wait, so which one of these two are they picking for the?
Um, this is going on under the front porch.
Yep.
And this one is going on the side.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah.
And then the one where if that is going on, it will be.
Along.
Yes, now that the porch that wraps around the Suffolk side and to the south has a sloped ceiling. So those lights will be, you know.
We all, we all see them.
Almost we, we wouldn't do it, because there are eyes, you know, in the, in the sloping ceiling. I can try.
Yeah.
And you just, did you have a chance to see the lamp?
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Hope you had any questions.
As you say, we, we were, you were with us a month ago and, and all the times prior to this. I, are there any comments or concern?
I would just like to say that I think it's an absolutely wonderful job. And that, and that everything that you propose sounds excellent.
I'm sorry, is there counted for the public here? Please.
I don't know if you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Clearly.
I think, I think it'd be really helpful to show the Suffolk side for, I think there are a couple of us that are concerned about the half bath that is put onto the porch and the windows. We don't see the new, I have the stuff that was submitted, but I don't have the revisions that were made after the discussion and the visit that you all had.
Susan, I second you.
Well, if I'm looking at the, okay, if I'm looking at the one. So it has not, it has not changed. They have not changed since the discussion item.
Yes. The, the only change on Suffolk side is the, we did not have the door and the step. And so we're putting, we're gonna maintain the door and the steps going up to the porch on Suffolk side. The, at one time, there was a, a proposal of actually trying to fill in a little bit of the porch on, on the, you know, closer to the, to the north end. We're not doing that. So there's no, the important edge we see it today would be maintained the way it is.
So where, have you moved, have you moved the location to the half bath?
Yes. Yes. All that is fully internal.
I just wanna say, for somebody who attended every ZBA meeting and the last discussion item last year, I think it was. Uh, they've made great strides and I don't have any other questions.
I failed to ask you to identify yourself for the.
I'm so sorry. Susan Mead, Five Suffolk Street. Their backyard faces my side yard.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments for people online?
And thank you, Zach, for your hard work and the, and the board.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments here in the room? Okay.
I have a comment. Somebody's raising.
Please, sir, please come forward. Thank you.
My name's Dear Garth Drummond, thirty-six Jefferson Street. And I am concerned in terms of what we're calling the architectural, the historic architecture. Uh, as far as I see, the roof facing east in the back is going to become a shed roof.
A shed? Is that what you said?
The shed roof.
He's saying yes.
Okay.
Okay. Now, my concern is, if you're walking down Suffolk Street to Jefferson, this is what we see now.
Uh huh.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, this is not the extension, so the point, but if you raise this, it'll look like what I consider sunshine, uh, houses. It's a sort of sold box zipper, that shape, like this, way down, the shape like this. And I understand the reason is to make fruit in your back without raising the roof. My concern is, how deep would the shed start? How far from, from this angle will it, will there? That part start, it's, it starts six inches back.
It would, it would definitely come along. For that, I would.
Do you have a picture of the, the arrangement?
Uh huh. So that you know, maintaining the, we're gonna maintain in your, your, so we're gonna maintain that. We wanna make, we, we wanna.
Right, but this is the part I couldn't see how far away.
Yeah, that, that step back, that step back.
Okay, there was a house on Madison Street that was a part-time redone. And it was a beautiful Sag Harbor house, story in the head. And her, the original builder took the, raised the roof in the back. And he did it from this end to, you know, to the other end. Then the new gentleman applied for, for a balcony. And I attended one of your meetings. And I asked if that, would this shed part start? If it could be moved away significantly from that shape. And I think six inches maybe it filled it too, too small. It'll still look like sunshine type roof. Can that be at all, make maybe twelve inches instead of six? I don't see how it would harm the, because the definition of the shape, the old shape would be this.
I'm trying to think about what you're saying. So I, I think we have to take sightline into account.
Right.
So if you're walking down the street.
Yes.
The setback won't be, won't be visible to you.
Oh, yes, it will.
Not the difference between six and twelve inches.
The distance from where the setback starts.
Right.
Is not enough for it to separate the shed from the original angle.
What shed? I, I, I don't know where the shed.
Then this thing is shed roof.
I understand. I, I, I don't understand where, where.
Talking about the difference between what it looks like and what the proposed is. And the proposed seems to be like less like this and more like that.
Right, that's a shed roof. Let me see what you're saying.
What, which element on the house?
Can you see the difference between those two?
Talking about.
Yeah, he's talking about this roof line. This is great. Thank you.
Great, oh, he has.
He's talking about this.
It looks better.
The shed roof on the bottom.
We're on the other side of the house.
Yeah, he's over here. So he's saying, you know, when you look in the backyard, the back of the, back of the house from.
Is, is that was the correct, Brent, in perspective?
Oh, we're on the other side of the house.
No, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's the other side. It's the back side, the other side.
Go through your list. Go through your.
It's, I think, fine. God, you know, it's very hard to see it. Because it's so tight back there. But he's talking about, this is, it's this elevation.
Talking about the dormer.
And then it's gonna be, right, the dormer that'll happen.
The shed roof door back.
Right.
Okay, it's, it's the back of the house.
Okay.
You'll, yeah, you'll see it bait, right? Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so that point is actually delineated in the style here.
But it's a dormer. It's, it's a, it's a, it's an attic dormer that is situated how many feet below the ridge of the house?
Oh, it is.
In other words, it's a dormer window that's coming out of the roof of the house.
Correct.
And the roof of the house is being, the pitch of that is being preserved.
Correct.
And, and that dormer window is now springing out of that roof and it's probably five feet below the ridge. Give or take. But there's no question that that's a dormer window in the attic. That's what that is. And I think within the context of preserving the massing of this house and its original roof, that is a relatively small. Many, many houses of this period in town, and I have a board to concern about this, have these attic dormers on the front roof. And they really change the whole of it because they enable you to stand up straight on the upper story. This is all they have stories. That's not happening here. So this house retains its original roofline on the front and that's nothing to think. And it's retaining the back as well, except it's getting this dormer window on the back, which you will see primarily in profile as you come down Suffolk Street. I, I don't know where the six and the twelve is. That's the part that I'm.
Well, okay, if you do this, that will give you another look. The mass will be all facing the gate.
And I'm talking about the, what, east side.
And I'm talking about the west side. Now, if you just move it slightly back. It's only a closet, I believe. Uh if you move it slightly back, it will look less part of the original gate. There's still waiting some belt to the house, and here's more to.
Yep.
I think they're also trying to merge together that odd cantilevered um portion of the house, and so they're kind of just bringing that back.
But I have to say.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
But the part, the faces, I guess the south. If that's dead with it, the new roof, the raising of the roof will be slightly in more than six inches. It will look better. Uh potentially, it will look better.
So let me just ask you this.
Initially, it would look better from Suffolk Street if you walk it down the street, but it does face the historic part of the house.
Just to mention here.
I think.
Okay, so just to wrap it up, so your six inches is the distance from the side of the new proposed dormer window from the edge of the roof. Is that the six inches? And you want that to be greater, so that that dormer window is in fact set back further from the edge of the roof.
From dormer window.
Dormer, that's what it is.
You're talking about Suffolk Street itself, or are you talking facing uh five uh, five uh?
No, we're looking at the side. Look at here. Oh, no, 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 he's here. He's here. This is what he's talking about, I'm I'm sorry.
Well, that's what you said.
Yeah, yeah, he's talking about here.
Not that.
So he's.
Well, that's existing.
But yeah, but we're pulling it down.
Pulling it forward, but it's the same roof line.
Yes.
The roof line exists.
Correct.
This is a prior addition. The roof line that you, that is not consistent with nineteenth century practice, but it's.
It exists.
Dormer, that roof line has been built.
Yes.
But they're changing, like adding that kind of a change.
No, there's actually not.
I'm not gonna see it from Suffolk Street at all, maybe from Jefferson.
It's already there.
It's already there.
In the backyard.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, it's already there.
Yes.
It's already there, he's enlarging it.
What is already there?
Come on, she come up, yeah, please.
Can I come over and talk?
Yeah.
Because we're looking at missing drawings and proposed, and that's what we really need to look at.
But we're looking at, we're looking at this.
Okay.
Exists right now.
Right. Now, if if it's only in that is six inches, it almost mashed, you know, joins the the other part of the gable part, if it were pushed back slightly. You won't notice the six inch difference, if it's pushed back, let's say twelve inches, sixteen inches.
Back, which way, which way you're pushing it.
Well, he's he's saying further away from this exposure.
Got it.
No, further away. You know, okay, the six inches is here, it's basically, you know, the overhang of the roof.
Right.
So it should be moved back, so this looks like one visually, it looks like one mass. If you move this part slightly back, it'll, you can distinguish the two, you can distinguish.
I think the form of it distinguishes it.
Well, I don't think it does.
Okay, well, I have an opinion, I respect that, but that addition with that roof line was not compatible with the original.
I also don't understand what's happening here.
Uh well, you have to. You have to, yeah.
But is it a dormer like this, or is it?
Yeah.
You know, we've exceeded three minutes of public comment, public comment.
Okay, just let's, this is the new comment, just, he wants to know what's happening over here too.
So so that is just, that's a dormer.
That's exist.
You will know, this is a, this is a new, new dormer that we talked about, uh that'll be on the back side, this'll have a wood roof and the wood, um you know, the wood siding and all, the match to have.
No. It's gonna have a flat roof?
You know, it it's a, it's a pitch proof, um it's a dormer.
No, no, this, when you said.
In fact, that's about all that you'll see, just like that.
And then how far is it away?
That that that's all the way back, because we had to tuck it behind the chimney.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So if you did the same thing over here.
But I don't think you see that.
Unless you, unless you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. My last thought is um, the way that you're gonna lay this brick. Um is it gonna be as is, the way that it is already laid in the driveway that stands, or is it going to be uniform completely? Because it looks uniform on this plan, but then it looks like you're matching it in the rendering, so I'm wondering which is which?
We wanna match this.
Okay, good. Yeah, I like that. Um so I guess we have to note that on this plan. Right? Learning.
I I think, is there anybody other comment we have from the public? And I thank you for your comments there, but I'm not sure that we can make those adjustments, at least from my perspective, I think. You've been through this a lot, and you've been very accommodating and and respectful of our comments, so I I don't. Um does anybody else wanna make a comment here? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I uh make the motion that we approve twenty eight Jefferson Street.
Uh can I have a second?
Oh, second, yeah.
Great. So, all in favor?
Uh.
Any votes? So congratulations.
Thank you. I think it's wonderful.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Anthony, how are you? Good, when you're ready, please identify yourself at the podium.
Okay, Anthony Burmanoff, sixty eight Union Street, I am representing the owners of twelve Glover Street. Um so this house, um project is a, just in brief summary, is a rear addition, uh story additions in existing structure, uh we've been before the zoning board of appeals for this, for pyramid and other uh other variances, uh we've worked closely with the zoning board of appeals and the neighboring properties to come up with a scheme that I think everybody was uh satisfying with. And um so that's where we're, where we are, uh we think that the, or we, I think based on observation that this was one of three, originally one of three almost virtually identical houses, this being the middle and then the upper, the north and the south, all of them got altered over time. Uh well, this house seems to have had, it's like maybe a few decades after it was originally built, since we've had a Gothic revival um makeover, because when they added this, these steep um gables on both the front and rear, and then this sort of Gothic uh revival front porch, this sort of a weird kind of mix of six over six and two over two windows, which I think was what happened, was the original house had it six over six, and when they did the Gothic revival makeover, the the new windows were uh two over two. Um so we've got our imperison elevations here.
Yeah.
These are all over two.
Okay, so the, these are, uh this is the front elevation you see from Glover Street, as you can see here, there's basically uh no changes whatsoever to the um front elevation. Um this is the side elevation, so this is where we, you can see we're doing our uh two-story um addition, basically what we're doing is extruding this um existing gable, um reframing it, but essentially at the same height, extending it out further to the back.
So I didn't hear how many stories, but two or three stories.
It's a two-story addition, I think the ridge height of the addition is uh, is lower than the existing ridge height. Um so that's what we're uh doing here, this is the driveway side, uh once again, dorm uh gable coming out uh with dormers on either side. Uh the configuration of this dormer here was working with the neighbor, they did, they really didn't wanna see a lot of windows in that dormer, because it faces, understandable, because it faces their house, so that's why we just have one uh dormer up high above the uh, above the bed, and then this is the rear uh rear elevation here, so that's existing, and then that's uh proposed.
Oh, it's proposed on top and existing below?
Yes.
Yeah, it's backwards.
Did you reverse that?
It's the other way around.
I know, it's unusual.
He's keeping us on our toes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, took, took me a while, we'll figure that out.
So Anthony, can you just turn, since we have copies, I want you to turn that scaffold, I mean that scaffold, the, so the.
Easel.
Easel, thank you, so the audience can see it.
I think there should be PDFs too, for viewing on screen.
So we're not, we're having.
It's it's not working.
I I've tried, sorry.
Anthony, you just wanna do a quick summary, but do they know what they're looking at?
Oh, yeah, so this is uh front depth, um front elevation, um side elevation, rear elevation, and um other side elevation, so that's the existing height. And um, what you noticed in the um existing and the proposed is, the the Gothic revival um gables on the front and back are already a little bit lower than the um same place, uh main bridge, so that helps us with uh bringing the new um addition out, it could still be a little bit lower than the existing main bridge.
So it it looks like you're extending the existing ridge height onto your addition.
It's oversimplifying it a little bit, yes, um the truth of the matter is, that whole rear gable is going to be reframed to a slightly different pitch, but it will be the same height.
I think, yes, I do, I. I think it's too high.
How hard would it be to lower that, it's it's um.
It it would be tough, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a low ceiling height in there as it is.
But it's a Sag Harbor house, and you know, you can't stand up in the mess, just the way it is.
Does that, is that what you're saying? In terms of hi- his, his addition on the back.
Yes.
The ridge line is the same height as the original.
Yes.
So, so, and and.
It looks a lot.
I'm a little concerned because I don't see a chimney in the existing.
Yeah, the chimney, uh there is actually an existing fireplace there, chimney, I I, it's not functioning now, and yeah, and the intent is to make that uh functioning fireplace again.
I think that that large shed roof dormer, you know, adds extra weight to that extension, so I think that exaggerates, the roof line is is what it is. But putting that dormer, that large dormer in, it pretends that adds a lot of, you know, visually mass to what's being posed.
But just, don't you, we usually ask that that the is, the roof line is.
Step down.
Step down, yeah.
Yeah, it could certainly.
Even if it's three inches, right?
Yeah, so beyond.
Usually six is I think a minimum, yeah.
So beyond where the existing roof terminates.
Right.
Uh then it could step down.
Right.
Which would, it would be pretty much where the dormer starts, in that general vicinity. The other problem, the other problem are those paired windows on the upper story in the proposal, they're very over those two over twos. Pairs of two over twos, that's just also a lot of window upstairs, and those are presumably original openings, I, you know.
Looks like he's doubling the size of the open.
Right.
Yeah.
So that, and that's just, aside from whether those window sashes are old or original as they are now, that's just, I feel from a design standpoint, that's a heavy heavy amount.
Makes it look top-heavy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And not at all, I mean, it really, basically it transforms the whole appearance of that sidewall, which as it is now, is original. Uh so so that adds a lot more window to that wall, because now you've had the dormer, you have this additional window all the way at the back on the first floor, and now these are doubled up in size, so yeah, I think that's um working aesthetically.
Have you checked the windows to see if they seem to be original, the six over six ones?
Yeah, I mean, most of those six over six windows are original, and we are keeping, keeping all of all of those.
That's.
What about the window on the facade up top, are you gonna change it to be squ- uh rectangle?
Which which window is that?
Um.
No, I think this, this flat roof extension would be the Italian.
Here is it.
Number one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh that's gonna stay the same, yeah, in the front, yeah.
Okay. So it's ar- it's actually an arch?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anthony, I'm wondering if we're drawing like this, if, I think it would be good to annotate the sashes to say they're to be retained.
It says that, existing window to remain.
Because I'm just looking at what we have here, I don't know, because it's.
I I did not locate it on the um, on the floor plans.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, so.
On the floor plan, yeah, to make that clear.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that, that, I I can certainly add them to the uh elevations.
I think that's a wise precaution, because anyone building from this set of drawings, if there's no clear instruction.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Okay, yeah, those are the elevations, I think we can also do the, keep the windows on that gable side as, as one instead of two.
Just keep a nice. Yeah, review.
Um.
I I would also, you know, add that that uh understanding about stepping down with the uh, with the addition roofs, but in this case, it's the existing roof is, it's coming in at the same height
For these day ones.
as an existing roof that's already stepped down from the main roof, you can follow what I'm.
No, do that work in time?
It's coming in as, at the same level as what?
So he's saying this is already stepped down, that's about six inches.
Yeah, so the the.
That's the way it is.
This is the original main bridge, right?
Okay.
These are the two uh Gothic revival um crossgables.
That are already there.
That are already stepped down a few, I think about six inches from that main bridge, so the idea is that these are already stepped down, and this is just sort of pulling that out, extruding it in a more static order.
Could you give us an elevation that shows that? Is that at all possible?
I mean, I can.
Or even, even a construction, or even a preliminary construction.
Alright, so.
Diagram that, because it from this visual from this elevation it's deceiving, right?
Well.
If you didn't know, because I don't know. So um, I mean, yeah, I'm just trying to tighten up our record from that one, so 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 that we're we've, we're gonna be consistent and uh we plan to to make some changes in how things go in the future. So, you know, I'm looking forward here, I I just appreciate something that says, that shows us this.
Existing.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Are you going to um touch the two out structures?
Um there's one, yeah, there's one out building there, which we're not planning on um doing anything with at this, at this stage, it's um it it's uh, it interestingly, when we were before the ZBA, we were actually planning on demolishing it as part of the um, you know, to to gain some law coverage. Turns out, it's a, it's a sort of, it's a contributing, non-contributing building, you know, it's it's listed as contributing, but it's obviously been pretty much completely rebuilt over time, but at any rate, the point is, is that we're not planning on making any changes to it at this point, also, there will uh no swimming pool either, because we need all that space for the um septic system.
That's great, good.
We are going to um we are going to replace the um foundation, but we will not be doing a health house lift because um it's just too close to the neighbor's property, and that was a big concern, understandably, a big concern of the neighbor. Um so we're just gonna remove, you know, we're gonna do a duck shelf, so um, you know, part of the founding, original foundation will remain, and then on the other side of the house where we have some more room, we're gonna dig out and uh do um a full basement under part, part of that part of the house.
And what's the foundation made of?
Currently, uh it's a typical uh stone and brick combination.
Uh huh. And you'll, it'll continue to be stone and brick?
For the exterior, yeah, we can do an open here, I mean, obviously, the structure will be concrete, like we do, but with an open here.
So we'll have brick instead of what's there right now, which is like lattice.
Yeah, um, well, where the porch is, it will, it'll be.
The lattice, yeah, yeah, porch is, porch is that lattice.
It'll still be lattice. Uh and the porch, I did wanna bring up the porch a little bit, uh because I don't think that the porch columns are original, um.
Yeah.
And I was trying, you know, they seem, it seems, they seem a little bit heavy. Um and that's one thing we were considering maybe replacing is the uh, the porch columns. Uh you know, I tried to find a photograph in the um, you know, in the.
Oh, they're completely the wrong style.
Yeah.
Jeez.
Yeah, in the magic book here, there is. Yeah, in the magic book here, there is um a photograph of the house, but unfortunately, it's not really that clear, so I can't really tell exactly what those all of those are.
No.
That's a fuzzy reproduction.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we can get to clearer ones.
If you could get us a clearer one, that would be great.
If you do that, I could also look at it with you to determine whether they're original or not.
Okay, do we want to do a site visit here?
That's, I think that's great, yeah.
I think so.
I think that might might help you understand how that roof is.
Yeah, and and also Zach, aren't those columns really rather the wrong style?
Well, they're part of that Italian eight.
They they look kind of federal and classical and as opposed to Victorian, right?
I think if you saw them in person, you'd
Yeah.
they they'd feel different, they're probably just, are the edges chamfered?
Okay.
Um.
It's not perfectly square. See, it's a slight chamfered edge going up there and then it terminates where it comes back down again, it's very possible that they were replaced. But, because they 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 look a little too big, yeah.
Yeah.
But, but they would, but being square like that, they're really piers, not columns, those piers should probably be the same dimension as that upper section. And they may have just need to replace them, but we could sort of puzzle that out on the site, that'd be good.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, um any uh concerns with the, just the other than what we talked about? I'm asking only because I'm not going to be going to be able to attend the next meeting, I'm gonna have to send the uh the uh the the homeowners returning their activity. Um so, um you know, I just with the overall kind of scale of the uh, you know, I mean, it's a ultimately a four hundred square foot addition that we're adding, so it's not, it it's not a big.
Is that all? That was gonna be my question.
Yeah.
Yeah, four hundred square feet more?
Totally. Yeah.
And you're you're saying that you are willing to go back to the old window pattern on the upstairs?
I think that would be something that the the homeowners would be okay with going back, existing, uh going back to that and clarifying what the
To maintain, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
windows are to remain, I think the big thing for us is the um is the it the addition in the rear there.
Yeah, I'm I'm still concerned that it's uh I I mean, I really would like it to come down a little, but uh.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, we could put another little step in, app app, you know, the existing roof steps down and then we have room to step down again.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, leave, you obviously leave the one that's there, but then just a little more of a step down, it also makes it less flat and massive, yes, thank you.
Is this, oh, sorry, I was just gonna say, is this like the original addition right there, that little square bit?
Yeah, so that little square thing runs all the way across the back of the house, yeah.
See, like, that's an acceptable addition for a house this size.
Yeah.
I don't think we want we don't want this. I mean, I don't want that, I don't think Sag Harbor wants that, I don't think Glover Street needs that, especially with one at the beginning of the street, we start with these little houses, except for the ones that are on Main, but they're all kind of historically small. So an addition like this little thing, when they added that on whenever, that makes sense. But adding all of this, it changes the entire character of the area.
So so we're not committing to anything today, let's all take a look, but I think your point is we'll take and we'll stick a look at it.
I know, yeah, yeah.
I'm saying, right, and I agree with Megan that I I just wish that would go away, but we're not, you're here not to have it go away, so let's see what we can do.
Sorry, Michelle, what were you gonna say?
I just have one good question to say, because that you're gonna be removing the hedge in the front, this is going away?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think that's actually already been removed.
Yeah, there's a hedge. As of soon as.
So there's how
Generally speaking, I think we don't, we don't want to see.
How recent is your photo this morning?
No, we don't want to see that.
It's the reason.
There's a, there's a small hedge receding between.
Oh, I'm looking at this picture, which is old, must be an older picture.
Yeah, that's not there anymore, it's only in between the driveway and the house now.
That's interesting.
Okay, so by understanding your defense, you've committed that we're going to schedule a site visit?
Right.
And um and review this again in in context of at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll make arrangements with Carrie for media time.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
And if we could figure out some way that I could get the emails about that.
So I think I need.
Motion to table this, right?
Can I make a comment please?
Oh, sure.
Please, sure.
Okay, I I just wanted to, can I please leave that a second? Oh, I just, I'm the, let me do, I'm Tom Moore, I live at Eight Glover Street, which is next door to the house, so I go on for the zoning board application and all of that, so we, I've the neighbor on the other side, sixteen Glover Street, and I have also been, you know, she's not here tonight, so I just wanted to make a comment. I, my only comment is this is that, you know, I since I live next to the house, I see all these wonderful details, I want to make sure that when the construction happens, all those details, all of that Victorian, well, it stays, that's why I am concerned that, you know, this rendering doesn't show the curved window or the right height of it, since you've seen pictures of it. In addition, this window, there is no window here today, and I believe that's because there's a staircase behind it, so there shouldn't be a new window there unless you're adding in that extra window that doesn't exist. So I would, you know, or I'm sorry, is that there, it's, yes, that's the right, I think, I heard, no, but
The front, yeah.
This window does not exist, so you probably would not add that window, so I would just say that when you do, I I welcome a a site visit, and I think that would be very glippy, but I think that detail work makes the house unique, it's very different from the houses on either side, which were built quite differently, so.
So the, as his conditions aren't exactly.
Not exactly, I don't think I think.
Well, we gotta get that right.
Yeah, and 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 the detail work, and I would also point out that even even things like the the um, the drains are also quite unique in their way too.
The drain is like a drain.
You know, I mean, the drain, the drain, the downspouts, yeah, that was about, yeah.
Oh, some drains. I don't know.
You know, there's a curve of the of the.
Is that one?
Oh, like gutters?
Yeah, downspouts.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
What's unique about that, I guess?
I don't know.
So that's, you know, so that curve.
What he's has up there, but all of that is proposed, none of that is existing.
All right, but what I'm saying is, so yeah, so the point is that, the other question I really have is that this this is a side window that currently does not exist.
Yeah.
And it's it's uh
Is it here?
It was, that's what he's proposing here in a sense, and the point is that I I believe the interior of that is staircase, I'm not sure why you would have a
Yeah, why would you? Maybe that has the stickers, it was
This window here, yeah.
Well, that's the reason for there not being a window.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Are you moving the stairs?
Yeah.
So wait, the window's gonna have a stair going by it?
The copy and paste command.
Yeah, I think so, because you're not, you're not putting the window there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So that would be another thing to speak.
Oh, oh.
But anyway.
Well, that's not right, good point.
Okay, great.
Wow.
And then this one other thing is, I guess, that in some ways it's not really the architect's issue as much as the contractor's issue, because some of these detail work could disappear during construction if I'm not, you know, and that's when I think that.
Well, that's why the comment that's made earlier, that it's good to annotate the drawings.
Right.
You know, because everyone has best of intentions, but if if something isn't labeled as to be retained
Yeah.
then it doesn't.
And I and I believe, I mean, you you know better, Anthony, but that that the the existing detail work under the the eaves and stuff is in quite good shape.
It is in very good, it's in very good.
Yeah, it's actually really.
The windows are in good shape, it's uh, the house has been well maintained, so.
Nice, okay, so we'll take a look at all that on the site, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was good.
Based on your neighbor's uh comment earlier, there's not gonna be any new construction on Glover Street for years.
Very quiet street.
Yes, very, very quiet street on the weekend, or on Sunday, Sunday.
Right.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so.
We need a motion to table it.
All right, I'll I'll entertain a motion to table, uh what are we talking about?
Twelve Glover Street, I propose we table twelve Glover Street.
I'll second.
Uh, any opposed, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, unanimous. Okay, who's representing forty five Denison Road? Okay.
Um. Motion to adjourn forty five Denison Road.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oh, the solar panels. Over here. Oh, sorry. Okay.
And this you have to pull it up on the iPad, so you guys can see.
Oh, good. Some letters of support, oh.
So this is the um one of the rendings they just showed, just
Yeah, 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 okay.
Yeah, little little letters on the main.
I have three in front of me here. One that goes back to May twenty twenty two. Oh, they all go back to twenty twenty two.
Oh.
That's when they came to us originally, regarding it, and it was something that they um at that time didn't think they were gonna do, and now
They want to do it. Mm-hmm.
Hi, Andrew Smith, Green Living, so we're obviously sold. Multiple times, um I've done two other solar installations in the historic district. Um and I know that I've remembered you, we were at Russell Diamond's house, we did the walk through. Um so also take a look at it, because he was building a historic type house, you know, wanted to keep all of that that right, but um yeah, making sure that, you know, nobody can see the solar panels and and going from that situation. We also did um John Shaka's maybe two years before that, where I don't remember, they owned two pieces of property. So we were then installed on one of them, because they had one whole pieces of property, they couldn't see anything. And I think at that point, we made a little bit of headway, because the, it was brought up at the time about, well, what if they were to sell one of those houses and you could see that someone else could see it? But they had that option at that point, whoever would be buying the house could then see the solar panels, to not buy the house if they chose that they want to see.
Mm-hmm.
So I think there was a distinction made between seeing solar panels and looking for solar panels. And that was the big differentiation that we've kind of gotten to over the years, is that you'll always find them if you look for them. But that doesn't mean that you're always gonna see them. So part of what we're trying to do is get it so that we, and I also know that um the board has uh declined like the Tesla panels, because they're not conforming to the area, they're very shiny, they're, they don't really look well. So, you know, here we're doing a domichi roof, um and we're trying to keep those panels in you know, obviously hell of offset on the green side of things, but to keep them in a place where you know, sure, you'll be able to see it if you actually go and look for them, but you know, if you're not really going to.
You did, you have, we're not looking at anything, so that's not gonna look like.
Oh, oh.
Sorry.
Oh, I thought everybody had these.
No, we don't, they have no idea what people are looking at.
Oh, okay, yeah.
All right.
Want to take a picture for passing on?
Yeah, that's the one that shows everything the best. Okay, so I only have a question about the largest, are you finished? Sorry, oh, um the 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 biggest piece that we see is facing the neighbor, and I I just wondered if the neighbor has
Is that facing south?
Been asked.
Yeah, this is her right here.
Okay, this is, this is, okay, good. Just for the record, I'm all in favor of of um solar panels, I think we we have to have solar panels
Sure.
in in the world. And um.
But not necessarily in the historic district where there is.
Well, I I was.
Well, it's got restrictions.
Yeah, it it's more of a challenge in a historic district.
So.
Well, it's, there's a code provision.
Yeah, we don't want to open it up and simply say, hey, it doesn't matter, historical, it's the same.
Right. No, so so as I say, I'm just concerned
She's looking at it right now.
Oh, good.
Um and how much, speaking of being visible, that big one is.
So cannot be visible. Yeah, the big one is.
Okay, this has a code.
Sorry, so it's, so it says um three hundred dash thirteen point seven D, additional guidelines applicable in the historic district. Solar and alternative energy systems shall not be disassembled in adjacent street or from an adjacent property.
Yeah, so, and I believe that there's actually um some discussion about amending that code.
There is, there is, but it hasn't been done yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I know, it's.
But I want to go back to one of your earlier comments.
Sure, absolutely.
S- so I've talked to some people who have been neighbors of the solar panel recipients. And uh, one of them mentioned to me, um who's very active in Village Life, that he never mentioned, it was actually uh a prototype panel, that he'd never complained to his neighbor, but after it was, it was um installed, there was like a one to like six P or five PM reflection that came into to where his kitchen was and 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 was made it very uncomfortable to be there. Um getting back to the Shaka thing where they own two pieces of property, it's not the person who buys the property with a solar panel they are for, it's the person who's in the neighboring building, right?
Yes.
Who can't demand that the purchaser remove the solar solar panels.
Uh, no, that's the, that's the neighbor, so not.
The neighbor who's uh who's impacted by the glare.
Right. In Shaka, we talked about it to the point that, so if he owned one property, which was actually, I believe, it was on Franklin, uh no, Franklin was the one that got the solar. So the other property was on the main um road here, and they backed up to each other. But the concept would be that if he were to sell his main home that did not have solar and someone were to actively look at buying that property, they would easily see the other solar panels in the back of the two connecting pieces, but they would have that choice if they chose that they didn't want to see solar, to not buy that house, they could buy another house. So in the same respect, when we did Russell Diamond, one of the, um actually President Ford was very adamant about, well, what if these bushes were to disappear, then someone would be able to see them, so we could put a ton of contingencies into all of this and say, well, at any point, if you were to clear cut or knock a house down, remove something, you would be able to see it, and that's why I said, you'll always be able to find them if you look for them. The idea would be to be able to make sure that we're talking about something where we put them in in an aesthetically acceptable fashion. Limiting the size of this, I mean, we could have put panels all over this roof, and obviously, we can't because of the code, and because of the steps.
This is.
That's a big field, that's a big field, yeah.
Yeah.
All over the roof.
Right.
With respect, I think the code addresses this now, and so unless the application is looking for a variance from the code.
You go to ZBA, yeah.
Then I'll, you know, I think the aesthetics, which are expressed in the code, all in terms of
Well, you don't have the authority to waive it, so this board has no authority whatsoever to waive that.
Right.
You have to go to ZBA, the zoning board of appeals has the authority to waive everything in the zoning code. And this provision preventing the, this board approving it in the historic district, when it could be seen from the street or adjacent properties can be waived by the ZBA, but not the board. So you'd have to go get a variance and then come back to the board.
So.
Would it, would it have to do that if it didn't, if it had these solar panels, but not this large one?
Yeah.
Because would we, would we be able to see these?
It would be visible, the issue would be if it was on, see, see, here's the problem.
It wouldn't be, that's the thing.
Yes.
No, those two little ones.
This one and these three would not be
Right, and that's why they, that's why they're on.
Visible from the street.
Street or an adjacent property, is the way it's quoted.
And you can't see it from the street.
Right, which is consistent with every alteration that you're given a consideration.
I mean, the neighbors wrote in support of this.
Right, the neighbors are not in a position of over, well, but the neighbors will be either at the variance, so in other words, if
Okay.
if you're going to go for a variance, it's gonna be put out there to the public, number one, they're gonna have to go against the the code and say, can we do it, and then they're gonna look for public support to be able to do it, so let's assume
Right, right.
for a minute, and I know assumptions are scary, but that the ZBA said, okay, and we come right back to you.
Okay.
Does it make any sense then for the homeowner to go through the process hold off on the construction, because we don't want to install the roof until we have the attachments in, to then wind up back here if you're not going to approve it, any.
Yes, because this board cannot approve it. Yes, because this board cannot approve it.
No, no, I I I got this question.
No. Yes.
It's it's a.
Let let me interrupt you, please. So, the question is that, this is a historic property, right? So the question is, we also talked to a different master besides the local code. Maybe I shouldn't have used that word, but to to that extent.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we gotta look at this in terms of historic preservation and and and. And I I think, you know, we'll look at it before we reconvene with you, but I I think, you know, I'd like to look at that and and talk to people in the state.
Sure.
This is, this is a, you know, very important pro- uh sort of thing, and once you start slipping or 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 giving permission for people to deviate from what's permissible, everyone's gonna use the last precedent to expand it, and um, so we really need to be careful about this. We have approved solar panels where it wasn't visible from the street. Or from the the street being even the side, the sightlines from the street.
Correct.
Okay, as opposed to dead on the front of the house, so this is a deviation here. And and, you know, we really need to look at it, where it's in the back valley facing away and theoretically not impacting the neighbor, those sort of approvals have been done before. But um, so we need to take a look at this.
Okay.
So Zach can't answer your question, we can't answer your question.
I I we can't, was there a site visit? Because I thought that was what got us here, did did it, was there a site visit?
Well, we had a site visit, but it was not about solar panels.
About the art stuff or not about.
Yeah. It was, and it was a few years ago.
Because originally it was on the agenda, and then I thought that the site visit was your question.
Yeah, because they were, it was see, the building inspector kicked it back because they were seeing from the road, and then it was brought back, and then the building inspector um. Moved it forward to come here and for them to look. But I would, I would assume you guys are more are concerned with the large.
Yes.
So.
Well, yeah, all of the fields, all of the. All of the locations that might be reflective into the neighbor's house. And and so I don't even know what the neighbor's on the backside of this, or that would be Division Street, right?
Yeah, no, Madison.
No, it is, it is Division Street, it's on Division Street.
Yeah, it's on Division Street, it's at the beginning of Division Street, well.
Yeah.